We don't have to wait on clay, right?
No, no, we should be fine.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call this budget workshop Monday, September the eighth, two thousand twenty-five. And I ask Councilman Scott if he'll leave implications, please.
Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to come together, Father, to do the will of the people and that will which is yours above all, God. Pray to your Lord as we work through this workshop that you will give us wisdom and guidance to make the best decisions possible, Lord, that lead to your glorification in everything we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kobe, you wanna kick us off with this draft budget?
Yes, Mayor wants counsel. At our last meeting, we said we'd come back with some options and then also that I had to make a couple of changes that we knew were coming. And so we've made those changes and I can go over those in just a second. But that would now bring our projected total budget to sixty-one million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. And so a couple of changes that had to be made. We were about five thousand dollars off between what we had in the budget for police vehicles and what the city marshal had. So we went in, made those corrections and properly allocated those to impact fees and general fund dollars. Then we had two additional employees, changed their health insurance, health insurance, so we had to add that in. I was a thousand dollars short on our street assessment, which comes from local option gas tax. So we added that in there from the prior year carry forward. And so to, and then in sewer, I was forty-one thousand dollars off on the camera. I had a different piece of equipment in there than that one. So we moved around funds from capital equipment replacement to cover that cost. To make up that difference, I re-appropriated the vehicle tracking to the appropriate funds. So we went through and associated the number of vehicles to the appropriate fund to carry itself, so that reduced the cost. And then I went through the admin professional services line item, looked at the last few years in terms of what we have contractually, what we've done on a one-time basis, and I was able to remove funds from there to balance the budget.
Let me hold you up just a minute. Jesse, are you Michael back there? They say they're not hearing us online.
I hope you can hear me online.
You can? All right, well, somebody, I guess, text somebody here. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
And then counsel, we talked about it at the last budget workshop and we had a further discussion during our executive session about the employee pay or bonuses for fiscal year twenty-six. And so I believe we all settled on a fifteen-hundred-dollar bonus to employees of fiscal year twenty-six in which the city would pay for both our tax portion and the employees' tax portion. So it will be a net fifteen-hundred dollars to the employee. That, once I went through and looked at all the positions and it took into consideration vacancies, and then any employee hired after September one wouldn't receive it, that came in to be, once I put it in, about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So it's a little less than what we originally talked about because of additional vacancies to consider. We took those funds for the general fund. We took funds that were going to out of the HRA account for the city. This will not affect current employees. These are dollars that we talked about that are unassigned and the interest that is gained on the account. And so it will not affect current employees, but we're looking to pull that two-hundred and two-thousand dollars out of the HRA account restricted. And here, if you, next meeting or so, we will bring an item to the council on regular agenda for that. But we'll print that restricted, put it into unrestricted, and that's what we would use to cover the general fund bonuses. And then the five enterprise funds, they will cover the bonuses appropriately there. So in terms of changes, those are the only changes that occur between the last time and this time. So if you have any questions, we can go through that. But ultimately, that's the end of it. And after today, our next hearing will be the eleventh, that'll be our first vote hearing, and then our second hearing is on September nineteenth.
Go ahead.
Kobe, I'm looking at the financials for audited twenty-twenty-four. The unassigned general fund balance, one million, four ninety-one and change. How much of that is being put into this budget to make it balanced?
Through twenty-twenty-four unassigned fund balance?
The financials, there was unassigned balance in general fund, I'm only talking general fund, of a million, four ninety, a million, four ninety-one, five ninety-eight. And my question is, how much of this unassigned fund balance is in that budget to make it balanced?
We, as you know, last year in fiscal year twenty-five, we did the prior year carry forward. That number encompasses both restricted and unrestricted. Once we got the two thousand twenty-four audit completed, we realized that a large portion of that was restricted. Therefore, at the end of this year, the deficit we had to correct to, we had to cover those prior year carry forward funds that we thought were unrestricted, but were restricted. We did that. Danielle's found that money in this year and done that. And then in fiscal year twenty-six, the roughly six hundred thousand dollars we cut was to make it to where we did not pull prior year carry forward to cover general operating expenses. So in the prior year carry forward sheet, I'm gonna stick to the page on the PDF. So it will be page, page five. In that top section, you see under general carry forward number, the nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Does that represent a hundred percent of the fund balance for the general fund at this time? Actuals? With, with, you know, if it was a million, four ninety-five and you made a six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar correction, is that the difference represent a hundred percent of unrestricted fund balance for the general fund? The nine hundred thousand?
No, these dollars were budgeted in fiscal year twenty-five and then we're carrying them over to the next year. We're not taking out of the one point four million unrestricted fund balance.
So, so, so my question then doesn't relate to what you're pointing out? Is that what you're saying? Those, those were purchase orders or something else that was?
No, these are, the numbers that you see were dollars that were budgeted last year.
Okay, but that's not my question. My question is, fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-four was a million, four ninety-five, or whatever that's, a million?
Four sixty.
Four, let's see, a mil, I'm sorry, one million, four ninety-one, five ninety-eight. So my question is, how much of that value is being utilized, was spent in twenty-five? And/or how much is going into twenty-six to budget, to balance that budget?
Going into twenty-six, we are not taking any of the unrestricted fund balance in there. That's, we're just taking funds that were budgeted in twenty-five and carrying them forward.
So, so unassigned balance is gonna be a million, four ninety-five plus whatever you don't spend in twenty-five will increase that value?
What's not being spent in twenty-five is what is fixing the issue we had in fiscal year twenty-five, which was we funded, we budgeted restricted prior year carry forward, in our prior year carry forward for general fund revenues, unknowingly at the time that they were restricted until the fiscal year twenty-four audit was completed.
I'm sorry that I don't understand your answer. So if you could just, fourteen ninety-one minus how much? Six hundred and ninety-six needed to be subtracted from that to correct the error?
No, we can, we can get the answer to you, but no, the six ninety-six represents a six hundred thousand dollar cut to the budget because we didn't want to use prior year carry forward to fund general operations. The other ninety-six thousand dollars reduced the natural gas and the sewer transfers.
Well, the total fund balance in general fund was three, three million, two hundred and fifty-nine. One point four, that was unrestricted. The rest of it was restricted. So if it was restricted, I'm assuming these things that you didn't spend were part of the restrictions. Those are part of the restricted number.
There was, of the prior year carry forward we had in twenty-six, which was just over two million dollars, there is a large portion of that that didn't get spent because we have these projects that we're carrying forward.
Right, so it doesn't impact this fourteen, one point four million?
That I'm aware of, because, and then on top of that, the restricted money that was budgeted in there, when Danielle realized that it was restricted, we now went through and that's why we talked about having the rake money idea from fiscal twenty-five. We're taking the money from unfunded position, or from vacancies and other projects that didn't get done, mostly personnel services, to cover what was restricted that was unknown to us when we passed this budget in fiscal year twenty-five.
Which, which I'm fine with that particular answer. It just doesn't really clarify what is going on with this one point four, the unassigned.
I can, I can find out on the eleventh, I can have you an answer on how it would affect the one point four million dollars.
But I, okay, I think we'll need it today before we answer. Is the finance director here where she could?
She's not.
Okay.
But, okay, we can get the answer and have it out to you, back to you.
Okay.
Bye tomorrow.
That'd be good.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Were the, was there any money taken out of the reserve?
To fund this budget?
Yes, sir.
Not from the general fund, no.
The, the emergency reserve budget.
Which is what councilwoman was referring to as fund balance.
Okay. Next question is,
Correct.
How much money was taken out of the enterprise fund, specifically water and sewer?
To do what?
Balance this budget.
Make a transfer to the general fund?
Yes, sir. And the second half of that question is, how much more is that for this coming up fiscal year than it was last year?
So the first question, first answer, from water, we're transferring one million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. And you can find this on PDF sheet page four thirty-four. And then of sewer, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. That is roughly of the two together.
And that's roughly estimated at like one point eight, two million, something like that?
Two point five. Two point five, but it is eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars less than what we transferred last year from water and sewer. Because again, when we started this year with the goal of reducing transfers, we, we put in expenses and revenues. We put the same exact transfer number we did in fiscal year twenty-five and we stuck it in fiscal year twenty-six and we worked down as much as we could. So this year's transfer number is less than what it was last year overall by ninety-six thousand dollars between water, sewer, and gas.
Thank you.
That's just a result of the other budget cuts you found, correct?
Eliminating eight positions, it's on the, the notes tab. It was one truck, two trucks, line item reductions, eight positions, and the employee sellback program is what totaled up to, well, on the spreadsheet, it's just the notes tab.
On spreadsheet, everyone received.
Oh, and I didn't, it wasn't on that one. I printed it, he just sent out, sorry.
Yeah, it was.
I had that the first night we were doing this.
It was the employee sellback program, eight positions, two trucks, and then various line item reductions, like the office budget and, or office supply budget, et cetera.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask another question? Okay. On page two of thirty-four, business tax, again, budget thirty thousand dollars. My concern, my concern is, how do we encourage staff or enable staff to collect more than that? Because there's a lot of money being left on the table in that line item.
So we had, we had.
And, and I'm sorry, and I know that Land and Code is reviewing that, but that might be a little bit more, I don't know how much more time they're gonna need to work through, because there's a lot of issues there. So my concern is they've done, they've not really done that in twenty-twenty-five. But I don't want to see it go twenty-twenty-six.
Well, outside of what the code review and land use committee is looking at, I know they got some new information the other day on how we can go through the process of opening those fees. With under the current structure, again, we go by the ordinance. But as we're looking at the average cost or annual revenue for it per business, it's typically thirty dollars is about, is the majority of our tax receipts right now. So we can push through that, but for me, by the time we send someone out to violate someone for not paying their business tax receipt, by the time we do the notices and we send them to the magistrate, and we're now over thirty thousand, thirty dollars, we just, we were trying to collect. So we're gonna be losing more money than we're collecting if we follow the ordinance as it is now. I'm, I'm good with that, we will do that. But the way we're currently fee structured, we'll be spending more than we're making on the business tax receipt as it's currently structured.
Understood. That's a bit of a dilemma, I understand.
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the information that Kobe's referencing that we discussed at our last code review meeting, the state of Florida changed the statute a while back on increasing the fees that we collect for business tax receipts. And we have to form a five-member committee consisting of business owners and actually go through a committee process to actually raise those rates. And the committee has to vote on raising the rates per Florida statute. So it's gonna be stuck at thirty dollars until we can go through that process and raise the rates. Even if we decide to simplify it, we're stuck. So all that was covered at the last meeting. Unfortunately, as Josh can attest, there was nobody in the seats out there. It was just us at the dais. Would have loved to have had public engagement on that, but we.
Do you recall what statute that was by any chance?
I, I don't.
We'll be in the meeting minutes, I can just get with the clerk.
Or, or just, just ping Clay. I mean, he covered it all, he covered it all in the meeting, but bottom line is, we've gotta, we've gotta have a committee to raise the rates. So, yeah, it's, they're stuck until we can get through that process.
Is the committee done by us then?
All of his business owners or something.
He didn't, he didn't clarify whether we could, at the code review committee level, if we could then form the committee or if the council has to form the committee and then go forth and go through the process, because it's all laid out in statute. But he didn't clarify, maybe that's something we could ask him during our council discussions.
The website was down, there were a lot of internet issues that day when we were here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead now.
Kobe, have you had, in order to balance this budget, are you having to brainstorm or consider any loss of city services to the citizens? Are you gonna have to cut back on any of that? Was that part of the, what you came up with when this budget was made?
I mean, in terms of the services we currently provide, we'll continue to provide the same services. In terms of responsiveness, effectiveness, stuff like that, what, you know, we're working on that. We're doing, for example, in Public Works, right? We are moving around, moving the cemetery under parks and grounds. It's the way they cut, cut that grass, same thing with Main Street, or the maintenance of downtown, park and grounds. Because it was one person, now we're gonna move Christmas reflections. He'll be three months out of the year, Christmas reflections, and the other nine, he'll be facility maintenance. So, but in terms of services provided, they're the same, but we will have to navigate and recreate a processes and procedures.
So the, the same services will exist, just not with the frequency it is now?
We haven't, we haven't went through it yet in terms of if we'll change the frequency or not.
Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, so especially as, as once we adopt it and once the new Public Works Director begins, we're gonna sit down with the foremen and go over their, how they do their routes and work plans and see if there's something needs to be changed. Not only, not only because maybe there's a less person, but is there a better way or is the way we're doing it just fine and that's okay? But also in utilities, every department, we'll have to go through there and see who's gonna help out one way or the other. Again, for example, we moved human resources upstairs and we left, we lost a technician. We moved her upstairs to be a part of admin in the same office, so we can help one another out.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but you beat me, go ahead.
Oh. Kobe, look at page four thirty-four. This is back to fund balance, this might help a little bit. Okay, it's the last paragraph before the totals, okay, in the proposed twenty-six budget. Prior year carryover, nine hundred and thirty-three, prior year carryover, what is L O G T, first of all?
Local option gas tax.
Thank you, local option gas tax. Okay, so the sum of those two, Kobe, was a million, three one nine. And then you're carrying over impact fees of a hundred and forty-one to, for a total of one four six zero. That's what's confusing me, because the only fund balance that's unrestricted at the end of twenty-four was the million, four ninety-one, so.
So the, the three eighty-six, three fifty-nine is, there is, we don't know where it came from or how it got built over the last few years. There is an account that has roughly eight hundred thousand dollars in it that was of local option gas tax money over the years. So that is, and it is considered restricted because it has specific uses you can use local option gas tax money for. And so that number, three eighty-six, three five nine, on the prior year carry sheet, you will see where that is. Direct, all, that exact number is directly associated with two pieces of equipment, a street assessment, the Twin Lakes Drive resurfacing grant match, the Reconnecting Communities grant match, and the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant match. So those dollars are coming out of that account. And then the one forty-one is coming out of the Police Department impact fee account, which is a restricted fund as well, because those fees can only be used for specific things.
So can you refresh my memory on when did the fire department deplete every bit of their impact fees?
They have not.
So they still have a balance in?
Yes.
And is it in the unassigned fund balance of the general fund?
It would be in the restricted. It's just, just like police impact fees, they can only be used for specific things as outlined in support statute.
Do you suspect that would be in the one called capital improvements? Because here's, here's your fund balances that are restricted. Debt service, capital improvements, or redevelopment, which is under the CRA line item, so I know that's not it. And special revenue, that's just lights and cemetery. So which, where, where would one find the restricted police impact fee number buried in?
I'll have to pull audit.
Is it doubled, is it like in the, in the tens of thousand dollars, not the hundred thousands?
Yes, I know, it's in the hundred thousands.
Oh, it is in the hundred thousands? Sorry.
You good, Mr.?
Yeah.
You good?
Yeah, I'm done, I'm just probably.
Oh, he's still answering.
Yeah, I'm looking back at this email that Danielle sent me.
Kobe, maybe, maybe, maybe it's in this twenty-five line item, because I can see here where you have it broke out on page four. In twenty-five, it was a hundred and sixty thousand and change.
That was our estimated, that was our estimated collection. Yeah, but there was already an existing balance. I'm trying to find, find that balance.
Okay, so that would have been what you would have expected to add.
There was already an existing balance, yes.
Okay, all right, we can move on, you can find that for me later. I'm just curious what number it's buried in.
I think he's still looking.
Go ahead.
You good? You might have mentioned this, you did mention safe streets and roads a while ago, but I did have a question on page two. Last year, budgeted two twenty-three, five for safe streets and roads. This is revenue, right? This year, one fifty. Now, you, just a minute ago, in answering her question, you mentioned safe roads, some of that, has some of that been used or?
No, sir, so we, we budgeted last year for the grant. We had submitted for the two hundred and, what was the amount again, two twenty?
Two twenty-three, five.
That was the amount we, we applied for in the grant. So we went ahead and budgeted that revenue and then we put our match, which was thirty thousand. But we actually came back and we got the grant, we only received a hundred and fifty thousand. So that's why that number represents.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think everybody's clear, Kobe. It's done.
I have another one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Ready? Kobe, the reason I'm asking about the impact fees is with everything that's going on and the capital improvements and other things that have to go on, can, is there anything that the fire department can use the impact fees for in twenty-six's budget?
So we looked at it. We, you know, back a few months ago, when Fire Chief came forward with the radios we need to purchase, we need to purchase, I believe, five, with five total. We bought two of those with impact fees and we're buying another three this year with general, with general fund dollars because that represented less than sixty percent of the cost for all five of them and had to be contributed to growth. And Fire Chief presented a report on that. But in terms of other things for the fire department that they're to contribute to growth, we're having a hard time assigning those things, right? Because we've had the same number of firefighters now for a few fiscal years. The fleet's still the same size. Building maintenance and repair is, my understanding, excluded in the support statute for those fees to be used. Now, if you were expanding the building, things of that like, I believe that may be possible. But that'll be a city attorney question on our ability to use them on that type of project.
So can it be used for the equipment associated with the growth in the city? But, but you're saying we can't? Did we already do that for twenty-twenty-six? Because you said we could use up to sixty percent, I understood you to say, in twenty-five?
We did on the, on the radios.
Right.
Of the total radio project, we used, we bought two with impact fees. The same thing we're doing with City Marshal this year on his impact fees.
Right.
His fleet has increased over the years, but the reason, the fire, the fire front has the same number of engines now for another fiscal year and same number of people. So we can't really contribute any new equipment to grow because you're not changing the size of the fleet and/or expansion of the service.
And they're not getting, expanding their capital equipment?
They are, I think it's the same as last year or actually a little less based off what.
Here, okay, fifty-five thousand, equipment greater than five thousand.
Yes, that's on page sixteen and thirty-four.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen, sorry, and yes, so it is four thousand less than last year based off what the chief needed in capital. And that, that number represents that three other radios and then a set of extraction tools, battery-powered extraction tools. And to answer your prior question, Councilwoman, the current bound, impact fee balance for fire is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. five hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Repeat the last three numbers, two six nine?
Five six two.
Five six two. And my question is, where, which line item is it? Which fund balance is that, that total? You know, these are aggregate totals, so I'm just curious what, which fund balance that falls into? Whether it's a restricted for debt, restricted for capital, restricted for, that's it, those, only those two? Or it's in the general fund of one point four nine, unassigned? Which probably wouldn't be appropriate, because it is assigned. Or, I mean, it is restricted for?
Yeah, I got, um, find out exactly, but it got pulled out this year, this year when we did. That's the reason when the fiscal year twenty-four audit was done, and we had the issue we had, we corrected, is because in the general fund unrestricted, in the total, was police and impact. And so going through here, and it's, it's in the capital line item. It's in the capital restricted.
It's in the one point five?
Yeah, the capital.
Both police and fire?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Kobe, you might have said this, but the debt service that we're paying on the engine now, we have one more payment, does that stay in the budget for the next coming year, that amount?
So it's in the fiscal year twenty-six for our last debt service.
Yeah.
When we go into fiscal year twenty-seven, you'll no longer have that debt obligation. And so we will have to decide, you know, at that point, do we continue debt service of some sort? Do we reallocate those funds to something else? Do we decrease the budget by that amount, so forth and so on? But yes, this is the last year of fiscal year twenty-six is the last payment.
Oh, so, okay. So I was under the impression that we had one more payment in this fiscal year.
We made the one for fiscal year twenty-five, and we have one to make in fiscal year twenty-six. So when we do fiscal year twenty-seven budget, you will not have that debt obligation.
Okay, I was thinking, this month, we would make the final, final payment, but no.
No, sir.
We got one more, okay.
About once a year, or twice a year? That payment, payment?
Uh, I'll have to find out, probably once a year.
Once a year?
Yes, once a year.
Thank you. Can we look at page twenty-five for a minute? Revenues, fourth one up from the bottom. Other revenue, other financing sources, three eighty-three, what's that?
That's the AC, so if you'll look at both that line, and then you'll look at line, the very first one, S R F, AC Water Main Design. Three eighty-three, this is, three eighty-three times two is a seven sixty-six. That is the AC Water Main S R F that the city received. Half of that's a grant, and half of that is a loan.
So these are going to be net debt proceeds that you're going to get to use the?
Yep.
We haven't borrowed yet, though.
No, no, we have, we have bid the project out, and hope to have that on the next agenda with the council awarded it to Anchor C E I. So hopefully on the next agenda, we will have a contract.
So the other sources down at the bottom will be the S R F loan proceeds?
Correct.
The carryforward of the impact fees, capacity fees, and the reserves. What does that leave us in the reserves in the event of an emergency? Or are we, are we bringing forward a hundred percent of the reserves?
No, so in the, the water, the capacity fees, and the impact fees, that's what I'm speaking on right now. It leaves in both of those, in both capacity fees and impact fees, or in impact and water, it's, we look at it two different ways. We look at the large lump sum that was paid by Eagles Crossing, and then we have every, all other impact fee totals. So extracting the Eagles Crossing payment, that leaves well over a million dollars in impact fee balance. And then the capacity fee balance is still over a million dollars when you take that seven seventy-three out.
So, so it'll still sit on the books? It's not brought forward in order to balance this budget?
So everything in here brought forward is to either buy, buy a piece of equipment, and or do a project. It's not to fund the general, the general operations of that department. I'm good, Mayor, if there's any other questions?
Page thirty-one. This goes back to the sanitation agreement. Did you already work with the county, I understand, to update that eight dollars and fifty cents per household?
I've reached out to, to the county, Mr. Kellenberger, and I'm hoping to get on one of the next couple agendas with that potential updated agreement. But I have, we're not on the, today's date, so we're not on their agenda for tomorrow. And so I'm just waiting to hear back from Ms. Thompson, on when we'll be on their, the next board county commissioner's agenda with that out.
But did you work out, uh, did you work out an agreement with them to take back, to talk to them in front of them?
Yes, what we talked about, we did it, was to, to cut out the transfer.
I'm not.
Transfer, we receive the money from D O R.
I'm asking something totally different, so I'm sorry if I'm making you think.
Well, that's, that's what I went to, to upgrade the, update the agreement.
Okay, so I, I kept thinking about this, because you know, I kept harping on, hey, I think we're leaving a lot of money on the table. So that agreement was made in the late eighties, mid-eighties, late eighties, early nineties, whatever they, I don't recall what year he said that was. Was it eighty-four, eighty-five?
In the eighties is when they did the, actually implemented sales tax. I think the current agreement, our current interlocal, I believe, is two thousand thirteen.
Well, what I did was, I went to the courthouse to get records of, what did the city map look like back in those days? It was much smaller than it is now. And eight dollars and fifty cents per unit, which I thought was one of the issues that the auditors wanted us, wanted staff to correct, is, wow, if that hadn't been updated since then, and we've been just getting this eight dollars and fifty cents, how many units have been added since that date of that contract? Do we know that number? I mean, how did we negotiate with the county to say, you know, we only had one thousand units back then, but since then, to twenty twenty-five, we've got ten thousand units at eight dollars and fifty cents, or whatever, vice versa? Same with those sales tax, you know, if the area has expanded.
Well, so on the units, I can't speak on the units because of the, I was here in twenty thirteen, and when the agreement was done. But in terms of the sales tax, that automatically is calculated by D O R. When we update, when people annex, annex in, and our city limits are updated, we receive that portion from D O R. Again, what, what I, the council approved me to go and do was to cut out the whole eight dollars and fifty cents, that would, that would go away. Would no longer be, that would no longer be a factor.
Did you say that was done in twenty thirteen?
I believe so, I'll go back and double check the agenda.
For the unit numbers?
Well, that's the most current, that's the most current interlocal that we are under.
And, and my point is, D O R might be paying that money, but they gave the money to us, and all we did was say, here, county, you have a hundred percent of what we got. And then they allocated it back to us based on eight dollars and fifty cents, or?
On a monthly basis, yes.
Yeah. So my concern is, the map today versus whenever these agreements were put into place are significantly different. And I do think that we need to perhaps rethink about, is there money that we're leaving on the table, and we're not talking about it?
So since we signed the contract with Waste Management four years ago now, I believe?
Pretty close.
Pretty close to four years ago? That has been brought up annually in request of the city manager to go and address that. My opinion on it is that the way the formula works, that was, that's all laid out, and it's, it's a formula from the Department of Revenue. So the idea that we're leaving money on the table, we'd have to take it up with Department of Revenue. Because what Kobe, Kobe has negotiated, or we have directed Kobe to negotiate, is simply doing away with that transfer, that monthly transfer. We now receive all that money and keep that money, and then at the end of the year, they then bill us for landfill operations. So we now get to keep that money instead of sending it to the county, and the county sits on it for eleven months and twenty-nine days. We now keep that money here, and we're able to then use it for all of our various operations here. And then we're then obligated at that point at the end of the year to issue a check to the county for our portion of the landfill operations. That's my understanding of it.
The formula, as I understand, was prepared by county staff and/or the clerk's office. It was, it's not a formula from the Florida Department of Revenue. And I know you said that the last time, but when you look at that, and if you talk to the CFO at the clerk's office, they're going to tell you that's not a, that's their formula. Just what was developed when the original contract was done. And that's what needs to be reevaluated or looked at based on, you know, might have been appropriate back in the time when the map looked a certain way, but now the map has expanded. And I just want to make that clear, that it's not an F D, it's not a Florida Department of Revenue allocation that you're?
So then where do they get the number from?
I, I don't know, I wasn't here when they made that allocation.
Because the two pieces of paper that were handed out show numbers from D O R.
Well, Kobe, maybe you could get with the Clerk's Finance Director and ask them, because they, along with Melissa, reconcile that every year. And, and it is just, there's just, they drop in the numbers. But our, like I said, our territory has expanded completely since.
Even though the territory expanded, we still, we still catch that because of the limits. Waste Management sends us a bill monthly with all of the accounts within the city limits that, we get that bill, we then turn around and send that to the county, and the county reimburses us eight fifty per residential can within the city limit. So every account, every new account is captured, has already been captured. Because as Waste Management does, does that service, they bill us.
So, so is it on the bill? The bill that you get, that you send to the county, are the number of units at eight fifty on there?
Should be, if not, every account is, it's an account number.
So, so if we requested to look at that, then it's going to match the map as it appears today?
Yes.
So if there's, if there's twenty-eight hundred units in the city that we're picking up trash from?
Every, every account that Waste Management does for the city in terms of bill for garbage, they bill us. Commercial and residential. Residential's split two ways. First can is free to city residents under the sales tax. The second one they pay for separately to the city. Commercial is billed separately from residential, and that is not covered by the sales tax. And we bill customers for that directly.
I've never gotten a garbage bill, and I have a commercial account at my office, and I've been there for eight years, and ever once have I got a commercial garbage.
Should be on your water bill. It's on your water bill, they're all on one bill.
So what is the line item, does it say trash?
Yep.
Solid waste, I think.
And that monthly ninety dollars or whatever, like, I don't meet the minimum.
I'm not saying it's ninety dollars, that, that number's.
Well, I just get a flat fee, I pay ninety dollars to the city at my building every month for eight years, the same amount, it's never gone up.
Again, if, if you have trash and Waste Management picks it up, anything, they send us the bill for both commercial and residential. We take residential, and we subtract out those that are not the first can. We send that to the county, the county reimburses us for that amount at eight dollars and fifty cent a can. The commercial, we bill directly to customers. It's my understanding when they're to see contracted out garbage, that the council at the time wanted that to stay with the city staff to bill out commercial. So we didn't give that to Waste Management.
Interesting. Thank you.
And the current agreement is dated April ninth, two thousand thirteen.
Thank you.
I got several questions here. If that main pump at the water treatment center that pushes everything down that line all the way to the spray field? And I asked you if there was a backup, and you said you'd have to check into it. With all you got on your plate, I imagine you forgot, but while the experts are here, can we ask them if we have a backup plan?
Counselor? Kyle?
Are you referencing, is there a backup plan if something goes totally south to the effluent line?
Effluent pump?
No, sir, I was asking.
Yeah, we have two.
You've got two?
We do.
And both of, the backups fully operational?
Yep.
Okay, that's question number one.
Thanks, Kyle.
Question number two is, in this next year that we're going into the budget twenty-six, are we still going to be under a hiring freeze, except on a case-by-case basis?
Really brought that up. That was going to be my request tonight, if we could, if, if counsel. Thank you. I think if, if we move forward tonight, before we have our first public hearing, I believe, I'm, I'm going to request that we lift the hiring freeze tonight. We're at, we're at the point where we need to start hiring people again. We've already identified those positions that we are not going, that are going to be eliminated in the budget. We, we've identified the ones that are going to remain. So my request to y'all tonight is going to be to lift the hiring freeze so we can start rehiring positions.
At the regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay, will the council have any input on what positions that may be considered critical?
Well, I'm just asking to lift it on all of them. At the end of the day, they're all critical. They're all critical to the operations of the city, so I'm, I'm asking you just lift it on every position, all positions.
I guess what I'm getting at is, and I'm struggling for the right words. This job's got, it's taken its toll on you. And you've been under a lot of stress. And you're trying to make everybody happy, and you've got this whole city to look after. And you really need an assistant city manager to help you with this load. You've got the budget, you've got the airport, you've got water treatment, you've got employees, you've got unions, you've got all the problems in the world on your shoulders. And I've had a few little comments with some fellow council members that, and staff members, that, that they've noticed it too. Your burden is heavy, and you may not want to admit it, but it's, it's taken a toll on you. And I'd like for you to get some assistance.
I'm hoping you're not having a discussion with any of the councilmen.
But this may be something that comes up for a vote.
Got you.
I do appreciate it. I think we, we talked through it. Unfortunately, this year, we don't have the funding for that. I do think the actions that the council's taken over the last few months in terms of the restructuring, bringing forth a Public Works Director, separating utilities, things of those nature. The Public Works Director starts tomorrow, so I believe, you know, that's going to help, right, on everyone on staff. I'm not the only one that's burdened. I'm not the only one that's burdened, you know, all staff is right now. That's, and that's why my recommendation to you is to lift the hiring freeze because we have a number of departments that really need additional personnel. But I think that the actions we've done in the last few months are going to be fine. Again, like we talked about earlier, it's just going to have to be sitting down and refining processes and seeing who can help who. And that's, that's from me all the way across the board.
Are you waiting? Go ahead. He might have another one on the... Okay. This question...
Let's try and round this up by five, two.
This, this, this question is not just for Kobe, but it's you, Mayor, it's, it's you, Amy. At what point did this budget go off the rails? Where we had to cut positions, both vacant positions and staffed positions? And our staff can't even get a cost of living raise? The reduced, the reduction in the frequency of city services? And the list goes on and on. At what point did it go off the rails?
I don't know if anything has gone off the rails. I think it, I might not say gone off the rails, not lately. There's been problems for years that are being recognized now. It's not something just happened in the last year, the last couple of years. But, and I, I don't know that it's as negative as you're making it out to be, but that's your opinion. Amy, you're welcome to answer the question.
I wasn't here, Mayor. I mean, I think it's going to be a key relative effect also.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I respond?
Yes.
From my opinion, I'm going to keep saying it. Y'all are going to get tired of hearing me say it. But I, I have pointed this issue out since I got on the council in 2019. We are transferring money from the utilities. We are robbing Peter to pay Paul. And to be just completely blunt, I would say that what's changed this year is that there's a willingness this year to tackle that issue, where there hasn't been a willingness in the past to tackle that issue. That's bottom line. Todd Bearbaum has been, as Bob Campbell is my witness, Todd Bearbaum's been bringing this up since 2019 and saying, hey, guys, if, if we want to do stuff with our infrastructure, we've got to stop making transfers. We've got to get the transfers lower. It's all in the minutes, if anybody ever wants to go back and look at it. So the difference is, there's a willingness by this council back in March to address these issues. We tasked Kobe with coming up with a scenario of what it looks like to have no transfers. And he mapped that out for us in great detail. And it was not pretty. It was not pretty at all.
Mr. Harrison, go.
Real quick, on the Christmas reflections marketing, the TDC funding went down $2,500, I think. Are we going to, this is a revenue source. So can we find money to at least keep that marketing expenditure the same or increase it? Because if anything, we need to increase attendance, you know, and, and reach out. We got, we got people coming from a wide range of people. So our mar, our marketing is, is costly, but $2,500 is pretty significant.
Yeah, that's my, so on the, on the budget attachment, for some reason, it's not showing up. But when I met with staff the other day, our communication team went over it. We did, we took, we had some excess funds from last year. And so we took $2,500 of the excess funds and put it in promotions to go back to the 10,000 even. So it's, it's, it's in my sheet and is what will be presented on the 11th. I thought it was in here, but for some reason it did not carry over onto this one.
So the TDC funding is stuck in the same, then?
This TDC funding will be $7,500, but we've put $2,500 in the promotion line item. So it'd take us back to a $10,000 number. So I have it on mine. For some reason, it did not carry over into the sheet that I put on the agenda.
So it'll be 10?
It will be 10.
Coming here. Okay, good deal.
And plus that $2,500 you're talking about won't be restricted like the 10. The 10, you got to spend it right where they tell you to spend it, that $2,500, you won't.
Correct.
Correct. So it went from 10 to 75 and it has to be used for advertising outside of a certain area and for certain things.
Okay.
And so we put $2,500 in promotions, which is not restricted in any way. So it would take us back to a total of 10,000 for promotions.
Got you. Good deal. One more question, Mayor, going back to Clay, was it here earlier? The question that somebody raised about impact fees and can, the question, Clay, was can impact fees be used for fire department building improvements? All right, not improvements, but additions. Is that what you said, Kobe?
So we've had challenges over the past, there's equipment is one. We had to have, we had to show the need and the growth factor.
Right.
My, my understanding of the statute, you can't use it for general maintenance or repair of existing structure.
Correct.
But I guess if you were expanding it to a certain level for growth.
So let's say you have an existing fire department and you need to do an improvement project to it. And as part of that, you're going to add additional sleeping quarters to house additional employees that were needed to combat and address additional growth. A percentage of the overall cost could be paid out of impact fees. You would have to have a proportional analysis because you have to have a direct relationship between the new growth that it paid the money and where that money is spent. So if we've got, okay, we need to replace the roof on the fire department, that's not going to fly because how is that attributable to new growth? So that would be the difference on impact.
So expanding the building size, could they be used for that?
In all likelihood, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, your fire safety impact fee ordinance addresses quite a bit of that.
Good, thank you.
Kobe, page seven of 34, capital outlay, admin reserves. Where is that and where'd it come from?
So whenever we talked about it in our executive session and we brought forward the 202,000 from the HRA account of unassigned funds, roughly 148,000 of that...
That's the difference.
That's the difference. And it's sitting in there for the council's discretion at some point in time.
Okay, so you're bringing this forward, so that's part of our 1.4 million, then?
Of the restricted.
Of the unrestricted.
I mean, I'm restricted.
That's part of the 1.5 restricted.
Yes. And again, it's not affecting, it will not affect any current employee. These are unassigned dollars in that account.
So are you asking that we unrestrict that 54,000? Which means it will then increase the 1.4 or are you intending on spending?
We're intending on spending. So we will bring forth the future item for 202,000 for you to unrestrict.
HRA, got it. Thank you.
All right, we're going to call this workshop adjourned. We will crank up in about three minutes after five.